Well, luckily, we have a cool.
I mean, according to.
Four is so good, I think. If it's like a two-thirds type thing.
Okay, that's surprising. And you're ready? Okay, it's uh 5:00 PM. We'll start the meeting of the Village of Oregon Board Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. Uh, item two, roll call.
So, Bashin, I heard she's gonna be a little late, so Kirchdorfer?
Here.
Manke?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Van Kampen?
Here.
And Beal and McDaniel have excused absences. And I'm just gonna interrupt Phil here, sorry. Remember to talk directly into your mics, so we all have to practice this.
Yes.
Thank you, Candy. Item three, approval of June 5th, 2023 Village Board Meeting Minutes, if correct, and corrections or mistakes, if any. Recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Amanda and Jason, discussion. Hearing on, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose motion? Motion really carries. Public appear- now, item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. Item for discussion and I want to know a possible action. A, a 2022 annual financial audit. Uh, a presentation of financial statements from, with independent auditors report for the year ending December 31st, 2022, fill of, from the village's independent financial auditor, Johnson and Block Company. And with us tonight, we have Tara.
Oh, I gotta do this, too.
Right up close.
I know, close. How's that?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Good start.
So, everyone, I believe, in your board packets included a draft of the audit report itself, as well as the annual communication summary, which I usually go over. I did ask Phil if he'd like kind of the abbreviated version, and then we'll open it up for questions, because I'm here to answer any questions you have. But I'll just work on hitting, rather than paging through the summary report, I'll just hit some of the highlights that I think are important in terms of the financial results for the end of 2022. So, in that financial statement packet, after you flip open that first page, basically goes through the table of contents of the audit report. So you have the financial statements, footnote disclosures, and some additional supplementary information. Then really, the, kind of the highlighted areas, you'll see on the bottom of page two of that report is key financial statement indicators, or key financial indicators. I would say some of the five or six key financial statement indicators for the village include available fund balance. Your general fund at the end of the year ended up with roughly an increase of fund balance of around $530,000 before the resolution that's coming next for a year-end transfer to your capital projects fund. So, an increase in fund balance of around $580,000 that allowed you to transfer around 400, or transfer $450,000 to the capital projects fund and still keep your fund balance at that 30% fund balance policy, your unassigned fund balance. So that keeps your unassigned fund balance at 30% of your 2023 budget and allows you to make that transfer for future capital needs. Additionally, your budget-to-actual comparison schedule, another good schedule to look at for some of your key financial indicators. I believe tonight also on the agenda is to prove a resolution for a budget amendment, correct?
Yes.
Yep, a resolution for a budget amendment. So that gets you in line with your budget-to-actual results, and again, that increase in fund balance. So favorable, even if expenses were higher, you had revenue sources to cover those additional expenses. Your tax base, your tax base, of course, continues to grow. You'll see that in correlation with your allowable debt capacity. As your tax base grows, that's in line with the equalized value of the village. So you've been able to maintain with outstanding debt around 55% of your capacity, which I believe two years ago, it was around 65% of your capacity. So you've been able to maintain more, about 10% less over the last two years compared to three years ago. And that's a combination of, you know, increasing how much debt you have, but that increase in tax base has allowed you to maintain that gap. Then also the operating results of the water and sewer utilities. Two different measures in the water and sewer utilities are, one, the operating income or loss, so operating revenues minus operating expenses. In the water and you two, water and, both water and sewer utilities this year, you did see operating losses, but there other, were other revenue sources or non-cash expenses in those operating results. Two main examples would be in the water utility. You did receive them, receive grant funding for some of the expenditures that were reported in the water utility. I believe that was the lead-based services that were replaced for some of the residents. So that offset a chunk of the costs within the water utility expenses, as well as one of the largest expenditure, expense lines in the water and sewer utilities is depreciation. So that's an allocation of the cost of capital infrastructure over their estimated useful lives, so. Because then the other side of the utilities is a look at cash flow analysis. So both utilities had increases in cash flow during the year as an ending result. The water utility had an increase, total increase in cash flow of 1.1 million, the sewer around 530, or sorry, 357,000. So both have healthy cash, unrestricted cash balances that could be used for future operating needs. But it's always good with the utilities, since they're primarily financed with user charges, to pay attention to those, both the cash flow and operating results, to look at whether or not rates are sufficient long-term to maintain the operating expenses or, or cover operating expenses. So those were kind of the, those were the key financial indicators specifically that I wanted to highlight. They're summarized here at the bottom of page two, but then they, they go right along with the actual financial data that you have in this packet itself. So, would anyone like me to elaborate more on any of those, or are there any questions specific to the audit report or any of the information provided?
Tom?
As, when I was going through it, there was a number of points where you had discussions with management and unresolved some items. Were those all resolved and everything was satisfactory?
Yes, yes, we worked very closely with, with Lisa and her team, and they've gotten us all the information we've needed, so.
There's no open recommendations?
In our communication packet, we do have some just general other comments. Mainly, those relate to future accounting standards. I will say, let's see, two of the main ones, federal compliance and controls. So you've, you've got some federal funding that's been coming in. You're gonna be looking at spending more of your ARPA funds. So it is quite possible that you'll get into that compliance audit that's required when you spend over $750,000 in federal grant funds. So it's always, it's a requirement of federal funds to have policies and procedures in place related to compliance over spending those dollars. So we did communicate some of that. That's a communication we've been putting in quite a few of our municipal audits, because a lot of our communities are reaching, or have been receiving that additional federal funding. Additionally, it's some information on, it's called subscription-based information technology, technology arrangements, and that's just a new governmental accounting standard specific to software applications and long-term agreements with software applications. So that's just a future standard we'll be working with the village on next year to see how it impacts and if it needs to be implemented with any software and technologies. And I think the only other main one that maybe hasn't been in our communication packet in past years is just informational, again, being aware of, now that you've, it's been several years since the village has issued revenue bonds. So with revenue bonds come various debt covenants of having specific funds set aside to meet those debt covenants. So I know there's, there's sufficient funds available. It's just making sure you're earmarking that for financial statement purposes. So, all just really informational. Otherwise, the same other comments as in previous years, which is pretty standard, so.
That it, Tom? That it?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you. Next item, resolution number 23-26, 2022 Budget Amendment Number Two, to account for auditor year-end adjustments, second recommendation to move the, move, motion to approve the resolution as presented and accept the 2022 audit report. Jason?
I'll move.
Amanda? Further discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Thank you very much, Tara.
Thank you.
And thank you, Lisa.
Oh, yes.
Good job to staff.
Put her through the ringer during this thing.
Yeah. Really, good job.
A lot of back and forth this year.
Well, you don't, you have a lot going on.
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four B, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information of the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Board members may discuss procedural matters relating to the information, such as whether the information should be directed to staff, referred to a committee, or placed on a future board agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Otherwise, the agenda will proceed as posted. Do we have one here for public comments? Tim?
Actually, I have two things I wanted to ask you about, that's all right.
Sure. I don't think there's much of a queue behind you, so.
Okay, thank you. So, Tim Higgins, Prairie Grass Road. In the financial packet that went out, there was a chart on page eight that indicated that debt between 2020 and 21 went up from about 22 million to about 23 million. But a couple of pages down, the amount of debt service went from 1.2 to almost 6 million. And that really surprised me that there would be such a jump in debt service for a somewhat smaller jump in total debt.
You may need to repeat that, because the people who could explain this.
Out of the room.
We're out of the room.
Okay, so, on page eight of the packet that went out, it indicates that total debt for the village went from about 22 million to 30 million between 20 and 21.
Just to clarify, are we on the right page?
Geo debt versus capacity.
Page eight of the, the agenda item.
Here.
Ah, gotcha.
The financial.
Scroll down a little.
So, debt, outstanding geo debt, 22 million in 2020, 31.3 in 21. Yes? But then when you scroll down like three more pages to page 11, the line chart, debt service went up. Sixfold, fivefold? Why would that happen?
Why the debt service went up so much?
Yeah.
The majority of that is the borrowing for the library. We borrowed, over the last two years, we borrowed, let's see, three, like eight and a half million dollars for the library. So that's gonna cause a spike. Plus, there was some borrowing done for some of the park projects. That was like another 2 million, I think. So that was like a $10 million borrowing that we did in 2021.
But the amount of debt service paid in a given year wouldn't jump that much, would it?
No.
That's what that shows. That's why I was surprised. I would expect to see it go up, but not a sixfold increase. And that was confusing to me. And that might not be something that can be answered here. I just think it's worthy of further examination.
Do you want me to help?
Please.
Yeah.
Please.
It may be that because you are issuing debt in a current year.
I don't necessarily have the specific details, but in a current year, when you issue new debt, especially large debt issuances, there are additional issuance costs and bond discounts and things that are, are in there. So it's not necessarily just principal repayment, it's principal interest, and then any of those charges or bond costs, issuance costs that go in there, which can be pretty significant when you're borrowing large sums. So if, on the actual audit report, which I don't know that you want to try to page through in your packet, because it would get pretty long. But of that amount, 2.2 million is, is principal, and interest is 757,000 in debt service. So, kind of goes.
That's not 6 million. Doesn't that say about 6 million?
You're looking at the 2021.
Yeah.
Yep, 2021, there was a year where there was debt paid off. A developer had repaid a portion of debt, and then debt was paid off with what the developer had returned.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then you had something else, Tim? The other question is, Lisa?
Yeah, and that was, and that was almost a million dollars that he paid off. That was outs, that was still, had a number of years, but they decided to pay it off early. And that was like a mil, not quite a million dollars. It was like 990,000 or something.
And any interim financing would be shown as paid off and then refunded with new, with long-term debt as well, would be included in that spike.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
My second question has to do with the proposal that'll be discussed later for the streetlight tax. Is it your expectation that that streetlight tax would apply to homes that are on private roads with private streetlights paid for by the homeowners?
I believe so, but, because I live on one of those roads.
Yeah.
And I expect to be paying the fee.
Really?
Yeah.
Have we researched the legality of that?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
I, I guess, as I understood it, it would be because it's the Alliant-owned streetlights that most of this, the fee is generated from, that we're covering. That's what it'd be applied to, is the ones that are owned by, all the streetlights are owned by Alliant, and we pay to them.
Not all of them.
Well.
Well.
I mean, if you look out this window, there are streetlights where the Alliant bill is paid by homeowners associations.
Right, but just, if I could make a point, it's not about the streetlights in front of anybody's houses. It's village-wide streetlights, and all the village residents are paying for all the streetlights, not any particular streetlight that might be or not, or otherwise in front of their home. I guess to clarify, if you drive on Alpine and you live on Main Street, you're making use of the streetlights on Alpine, and that's why everyone pays regardless of where they live.
Okay. It's not in relationship to the cost of the individual lights in your neighborhood.
Right.
It's the lights for the entire village that's distributed across everyone. Sorry?
Listen to the discussion, I know, Phil.
Okay, I'd be advised to limit the discussion on this.
I'm sorry?
I'm being advised to limit the discussion of this right now.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other public comments? Item five, approval vouchers in the amount of 1,660,000, $690.60. Motion to approve, recommendation, motion to approve as presented. I'll move. Jason?
I'll second.
Amanda? Questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, all those.
Nope, roll call.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Okay, roll call.
Bashin?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
And Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda. Staff recommendation, motion to approve it. Consent agenda items as presented. Each of these items had a memo in the packet. Were there any questions on any particular item? Entertainer motion to approve. Amanda?
Can I speak up really quickly? I'm sorry.
Oh.
There is one item on there, if it's okay, that I'd like to quickly address. That's item six E. It's the purchase of the new Bobcat. That item is, the motion in it is based on an older quote. We think that the quote is likely close to accurate, but just in an abundance of caution, because we weren't able to get confirmation on that number today, we were hoping to substitute in a different motion. I did send it to Candy. Would you like me to read through it, Candy, or do you wanna?
Well, I think you should pull it out, too, if we want to vote on that separately.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, let's do the consent agenda items.
Yes, I'm gonna.
If the board is in agreement to pull E out.
Yeah, we're gonna separate item six E without objection. Okay, so then the rest of it, please.
I do have.
You have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, Tom's second. Further discussion on those items. Hearing on, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Okay, back to item six E. And Lauren, thank you.
Yes, sorry about this. Clearly, this is not my forte. So.
We get through it.
So, I appreciate that. Yeah, it's, it's essentially what I described before. Pretty much everything holds true. Why we are getting the skid steers is well-covered in the packet. It's essentially to be able to plow some, some of these newer parking lots that are coming online more, most notably the library. But what we're hoping to do is the, the cost included in the motion that's in the packet right now is $89,000 and some change, but to give ourselves a little bit of flexibility in case our vendor does come back, we were hoping to up that such that the motion reads something closer to, "Motion to authorize public works to procure a T-76 track Bobcat from Bobcat of Janesville for an amount not to exceed $100,000 and an accompanying metal plus plow for the $21,567.50."
That was where I was going next, thank you. So it's still within budget at 100,000, obviously.
Correct, yeah. The, the amount borrowed for this item, and we're talking just the Bobcat, not the Bobcat and the attachments, was 121,000. Now, about 1,500 of that is taken up because the metal plus plow was budgeted at 20,000. And so we're gonna have to cover that extra 1,500 out of that. But that still leaves us, even if we go up to that 100,000, that still leaves us with about 19,000 of excess. If the quote were to come back, be refreshed in a couple days, and come up back above that 100,000, we'd really feel more comfortable just bringing it back entirely, because that would be an increase of over 10%, so.
Okay, so, I need a motion to that effect. Carleen, just to be clear, I'll read that motion, too. Procurement of a T-76 track Bobcat skid loader in the amount of not to exceed 100,000, and a metal press plow for 21,567. And we have a motion from Carleen, Amanda's second, further discussion. Hearing on, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Thanks, Lauren.
I'm sorry, who was the second? I was not listening at all.
That makes two of us.
I was reading something else, so.
Okay, thank you, Lauren.
Thanks, guys.
Item seven, reports of committees, item for discussion and our possible action. A, planning commission, certified survey map for 931 Autumn Woods Lanes and five Fairwoods Courts for property lot-line adjustment. Advocate Gerald Polly, there was a, pretty well-covered in your packet. If Lisa wanted to add anything? No? So, we're looking for a motion to approve. Jason and Carleen, the second. Discussion. Hearing on, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Thank you. Item B for informational only is the Oregon Fire, Oregon, Oregon Fire EMS District Commission Minutes from June 1st, 2023. Isn't the wrong state for a minute. Item eight, unfinished business, items for discussion and/or possible action. It, A, ordinance number 23-06, creating a streetlight, electric expenditure recovery user charge. I'd like to get a motion on the table for this item. Amanda and Tom? Did, something, Eric?
Do you want to take this one, Derek?
Did you have something on this, Derek? Pardon me. Did you have something on this item?
I just wanted to point out that after our last meeting, I had a chance to take a look at the ordinance and compare it against what the authority of the municipality was underneath state statute. And we wanted to look at three distinct points, right? One was, does the village have the authority to impose a special charge under statutes, just at the base level? Two is the way that the ordinance imposes that special charge, is it fair and reasonable under the terms of the statute? And then three, what's more of your responsibility is determining is the policy choice. Is this the way that you want to allocate those costs to operate the streetlight system? And so the, I think the answer to the first two is yes, that the village can operate, I'm sorry, can impose a special charge for services that it supplies on a village-wide basis. And as you were having discussing with, with Tim earlier, to say that the benefit is not that you have a streetlight out front of your house, but that, that there's a benefit to all residents for having streetlights throughout the village, for one way or another. A couple of points I wanted to make in the ordinance itself. Right now, the ordinance imposes a special charge on residential lots and non-residential lots, and provides a definition of those two. The ordinance does not impose a special charge on any vacant property right now. So, that is a question for the board, whether or not it wants to extend that charge onto any, any owner for vacant property. Lisa can correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, if we have the cost for streetlights paid out of our general fund, just from property tax revenues, that's, the monies that would be provided to that are distributed amongst the entire village. Whether the property is vacant or approved, this is just a question of whether or not you want to impose that on certain types of properties or not. And I believe in answer to Tim's question as well, is that again, regardless of whether the streetlights on, say, Prairie Grass and the private, the private drive portions are paid for by the HOA or by the village, this ordinance, I think, as drafted, would allocate that cost to those houses the same as it would on any, any public road in the village.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion? Amanda?
So, the vacant properties thing kind of threw me for a loop. That's new information. I guess what I'm thinking is, if a property is vacant, they're probably not getting any sort of other bill from us, like no water bill or any electric, any other form of bill, which means we'd have to, we'd be mailing a bill to them just for the streetlight tax. And it's my understanding this is only gonna be a few dollars a month. Is it cost-effective for us to do that?
So, right now, the fee is $2.30 a month, and we're working through some of the procedures on how this is gonna work. So on a vacant parcel, does it make, and it costs 73 cents to create that invoice and mail that invoice? So, we're almost, there's really no gain on invoicing.
We might do it biannually or annually then.
Right, yeah, and that's the discussion that I'm, I'm trying to figure out. I, depending on what, I didn't want to get too far into it before I knew what was gonna happen. I didn't want to spend a lot of time on it. But one thing that I'm gonna work with then is with civics and in our Cassell software to see if we can carve out a block of customer numbers in the utility billing software, where we can bill, well, we will be carving out a number of, because there are tenant and landlord situations where the tenant is the one getting the utility bill right now and not the landlord. So we are gonna have to add a substantial number of customers into the system. So that's why this is not gonna be an immediate thing that's gonna take place, because it's gonna take time to actually implement it. By the time we get all of those new customers entered and figure out for the landlord.
By the time we get all of those new customers entered and figure out for the landlord-tenant situations where they're not getting a utility bill, if we're gonna just invoice them once a month, or once a year, or twice a year, so that's the part that I'm, I'm still trying to figure out which way to go with that.
Okay, and my, my next thought on the vacant properties, though, is that if, I mean, we're calling this a user fee.
Yeah.
And if it's a vacant property, are they using streetlights? There's nobody there to use them.
Right, and so, yeah, that was kind of our thought process there. Thought process is that there's nobody that is, like, going to work there. There's nobody, um, that lives there, so there's, like, nothing associated with a vacant lot where somebody would actually be using the streetlights. So, that's kinda why we, and I think it's only, like, well, I think it's down to, like, only a hundred and thirty vacant lots. That was on our, um, end of the year, um, affordable housing report.
Right, but we've added, I was just checking with, um, Derek, but, I mean, all of the new, for example, Veridian lots that, that final plat hasn't been accounted for, but that's, you know, a hundred and twenty lots, um, Autumn Ridge, so those are all, though, future phases. It may be, you know, a decade before some of those lots see homes.
And Amanda, if I can just make one point. So, under the statute, it's a special charge that can be imposed on property for current services rendered, so it's not necessarily a user charge, even if that's the way that the ordinance styles it as. The question, though, is whether or not that property is getting a service by having the, the village streetlights in this case, right? And you could certainly argue that the statute provides a number of examples, like if you go out and do, uh, street tarring, for example, or snow plowing, you could theoretically impose a special charge for that, on that property. Now, is it arguable whether or not a vacant lot is actually received, is it a service to that property even if it's, doesn't have improvements on it? I don't know. That, the case law is not clear, statute's not clear on that. And just real quick on your second question, I just wanna make sure that was clear as well, is that, under the ordinance as drafted, uh, the treasurer has the ability to do, um, uh, non-monthly billing as well, for example, if they don't get utility bills. So, they, she at least has the option to do that in the case that somebody isn't receiving a monthly utility bill already. She doesn't have to use it if she doesn't want to, but in, in case that the opportunity comes up, if she identifies, um, some situations where that's necessary, then she could do that.
Okay.
Uh, I wanted to ask, so, normally I would wait, but I wanted to follow up with Derek's point here. So, you said that, uh, unapproved parcels would be, you know, truly vacant, but if they're improved parcels of any type, such as a vacant building, are they getting some kind of bill now?
If there is water and sewer services to that.
Yeah.
They would be getting a bill monthly, yes.
Okay. Thank you for, sorry for jumping in. So was Carleen?
Yeah, I'm wondering when we anticipate that this, we would begin charging this, just based on what needs to happen still to implement it, and then, based on that, and I'm kind of thinking-
Hey, talk into the mic.
Hello, sorry.
Thank you.
Can I not use that one there?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, um, so I'm wondering, um, when we anticipate that there would be implementation of this based on needing to do several things before that, before it would begin to happen, and then also knowing that just yesterday, the governor signed the shared revenue bill, when we anticipate that, that, when, when that would go into effect and how these two might overlap? Do you have any ideas on those things? All right, just the first one. How long do you think before this would be implemented?
I would hope to have it done for the utility bills that would go out in August.
Okay.
But there, I mean, there's a, depending on your decision, it's gonna determine how long it's gonna take, too.
Right, got it. Thanks.
Jason?
So, for me, um, as I think about this, and we're, we're talking, looking at schedule, scope, and budget here, um, in my mind, and if we're talking about a hundred and two properties, maybe two hundred properties-ish, we're talking, um, for a full year, twenty-eight hundred dollars, um, and taking into, to account the time it takes Lisa to set that up, the system up, and her salary and her time used there, it may actually end up costing the village more the first six months to charge the vacant lots than to not, and so I, I'm happy with it the way that it is, um, for now.
So, just to clarify-
Microphone?
I just wanna make sure I-
Microphone. Sorry.
Sorry, I'm just asking, Jason, so I'm just clarifying that you're dealing with the part of what Derek presented about vacant properties.
Correct.
Not, not the streetlight fee in general, just the vacant property part. Okay, thank you.
Tom?
I guess I would, when I went through the dates that Martin laid out, that this was discussed previously in last year's budgeting process, you allocated about seventy thousand dollars in revenue coming from this for the calendar year, which would may have meant that we would've had to have it in place like July first from a, so we're already a little bit behind that curve as far as implementing it and the revenue that you anticipated in getting a balanced budget last year. So, I guess I would, I would say Lisa's gotta work as quickly as she can to get this into place as quickly as possible. There's, there's obviously some administrative things that need to be worked out in relationship to non-built properties, currently built utilities, but, uh, I think we need to get this into place as quickly as possible so that we do get the revenue that we had anticipated, um, in relationship to the shared revenue and other revenues that might be coming. I think that's next year's budget discussion, and then we start the whole discussion again, and we're gonna continue this fee again next year.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think that we'll be seeing any of the ex, ex, extra shared revenue this year, so, and I know that ordinance speaks to, um, each year it'll be analyzed because if costs go up from Alliant, that'll have to be incorporated into the new fee for the next year, so that'll all be done during the budget process. So, I guess as we start that and we have our meetings beginning in October, maybe that's the time to address next year's budget, knowing what the additional shared revenue is now. Um, I mean, I don't, for this year, I mean, we're halfway through the year already, and to pull seventy thousand dollars out of the budget would be really hard to make up somewhere else.
Amanda?
So, if we wanted to add in the vacant lot thing, is that a quick change, or would we have to, I mean, could we just add in, you know, like improved lots and unimproved lots?
So, you'd, then it's gonna be every lot.
It would just say every lot?
Yeah, it would, it would be all parcels excluding anything owned by the state and the village.
Okay.
The, the other point that I would make is that right now, the scheme that's set up is that for, what are residential lots, get a, a single billable unit, and non-residential lots, which include, like, multifamily residential dwellings, um, get two billable units. So, someone has to add up all the properties in the entire village and say, this is residential, this is non-residential, and you get a total pie, right? You get, for example, a hundred billable units, and you take the actual charge that we have to pay Alliant, divided by a hundred billable units, and you figure out what the charge is. So, the question then becomes, if you wanna add in vacant lots, what number of billable units would you assign to it? I think that's the bigger policy question as well, is if you treat it as, as just a residential lot and just, and, 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 and charge him a single billable unit, would it be half, would it be something else? And I don't have a good answer to what that would be assigned at, but.
So, my next follow-up is what do other communities that have implemented this kind of tax do for vacant lots?
Well, the one that this, um, ordinance was taken from, they did not build, um, vacant lots.
Right. I would just make, I know, just make a point that it's our ordinance, we can modify it at any time.
Yep.
If we could pass it without it, uh, have, have some more research done, report back, modify, change the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, further discussion.
Phil, can I make one more point?
Please.
On page three of the ordinance is a, this was in the, uh, the ordinance as it was presented to us, but includes a provision related to appeals, uh, states that a charge may be appealed to the village board by filing a written appeal, um, shall specify the grounds for challenge to the amount of the charge. In reading this and in knowing the relatively low amount of the charge, I'm wondering whether it's necessary that there's an appeal provision in. I think, uh, the ordinance itself is fairly black and white. Either you're a residential unit or you're a non-residential unit, and you're gonna be, a special charge is gonna be imposed based on that number, and I think if, if there's an issue, that person can certainly raise it to staff, and if, if staff is incorrectly calculating it and they need to comply with the ordinance, I don't know if it's necessarily something that should come to the board every time that somebody feels that they have an improperly imposed charge for two dollars and forty cents, so, but that's ultimately a decision that you have to make.
So, the, the question is at hand is, do you want the appeals to rise to the level of village board or just being handled by staff? Is that the, is that the crux of what you're saying there?
Absolutely. You could start with, I mean, you could strike all the language, you could just change it and say that the charge may be appealed to the, uh, village treasurer or to staff.
So, would you remove all of, all of five, or would you just say there will be no appeal process, no appeal process?
Well, he's, he's saying that as written, we would-
Right, as written as, as we would, but what he's suggesting-
One option would just be to strike it entirely, all, all of five, and just, if someone has an issue, they could bring it to the, to the, uh, village.
Okay.
And village staff has to comply with the ordinance, and so if, if we're doing it wrong, we would change it anyways.
Okay.
The question here is if there's some ambiguity between perhaps whether or not they're a residential or non-residential lot. I'm just not sure it rises to the level of needing board input on, but that's, again, your call.
So, uh, it, it, just my take on it is, is, uh, to leave in five A, uh, and strike B, would that language work?
No, you'd, you'd strike A and B.
So, you wanna eliminate the appeal process altogether?
No, I would not want to eliminate the appeals process. I would just, I would change A to village staff. Or, or to village treasurer, and-
Just take out to the village board. Just say a charge may be appealed by filing a written appeal with the village clerk.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, and then-
You'd need to change B then to-
Yeah.
And then strike B.
Then strike B, sorry.
Will that work?
Chuck into the mic.
Or do you need language in B, Derek?
Nope, that's fine if you wanna do that way.
Okay, so, it sounds like, uh-
So, since we have a motion already, do I need to move?
You do need to-
So, I, I move to amend the motion.
That's where I'm going, yeah.
That was what I was waiting for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Move to amend the motion as stated that, uh, to strike five B.
Hmm.
And to change five A, the two, four, six, seven, eighth, and ninth word to be village staff instead of village board.
Okay, that makes sense. We have a motion?
Excuse me, from village board to village staff.
Well, we don't need any of that.
A charge may be appealed by filing, just remove-
By filing, take out the words to the village board.
Okay, just take that out, okay.
Take out to the village board.
Yep.
Strike-
Appeal can be undertaken.
A charge may be appealed.
Yeah, just go from appealed by to by.
Take out the words to the village board.
Maybe appealed by filing a written appeal. Eric, gotcha.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, so we have a, a motion for an amendment.
So, we have a motion.
We have a second from Carleen.
Okay.
Further discussion? Okay, on the amendment, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carries. Back to the main motion. I have a motion, a second on the table for the discussion of that. Hearing on, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carried. Good conversation. Thank you all. Thank you, Derek.
Yep.
Thank you, Lisa. Hopefully, thanks to everybody in the room. How about that?
Yeah, thanks, Martin, for being here.
We got a small crowd, I think everybody helped, so. Okay. Let's see here. There we go, okay. Uh, item nine, new business items for discussion or possible action. A, review operating budget policy and consider twenty twenty-four annual bu- budget, excuse me, twenty twenty-four annual operating budget direction. No actions required, um, but certainly comments are welcome. Hearing on, oh, Carleen.
I just wanna put-
I just wanna say that I appreciate having this process spelled out so, um, in such layman's terms, so that I can read it and understand what is expected each step of the way, so it's, it's appreciated.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
About it. I noticed on here that it says, uh, Monday, July seventeenth, village board continues review of draft of the ten-year capital plan, but it was my understanding we're meeting July twenty-fifth instead. Because that's when Ben Lyman is coming to talk.
Twenty-four.
Or twenty-four, sorry, twenty-four.
Yeah, it should be the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so, sorry, sorry, the, so, July, Monday, July twenty-seventh should read Monday, July twenty-fourth.
We'll get that fixed. He probably just-
July seventeenth will read July twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other comments? Hearing on, thanks, Carleen. Okay, item B, uh, nine B, uh, permanent, non-exclusive, limited easement between QuickTrip Incorporated and the Village of Oregon at nine fifty-one Janesville Street. Uh, there was a detailed memo in the packet, staff recommendation authorized easement to be signed and recorded after final review by the village attorney. Additional comments, Lisa?
I can give a, a quick overview. Um, so, Lakestone Properties that just built and up in their Prairie Brook Apartments on Janesville Street own the two parcels, um, well, there were several parcels, they, they made them into two parcels. One is the apartment site and the other site is the commercial site, which they're selling to QuickTrip. Um, in the closing process for that property, there was a easement that was brought up, um, for some handicap ramps that the, the new ramps actually extend into private property, and so, um, the QuickTrip attorneys put together some language about, you see, allowing the village access to come in and maintain, repair, et cetera, service those handicap ramps. Um, so, this is somewhat important in kind of wrapping up their, their closing, so just wanted to bring this before you to let you all know that this is happening and make sure you're generally okay with it. Um, just this afternoon, Derek sent us another kind of redline version, and we wanna make sure that, um, Jeff and Lauren have a chance to look at that, um, before we send back to QuickTrip, but just some small, um, language changes, so I don't anticipate anything big, but it's a couple funny-looking triangle parcels here off Janesville Street. These just line up with where the new crosswalks are. Um, Derek, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add?
Do we know whether or not those have been constructed yet in that area?
They have.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, and I know that intersection is actually open now, if you haven't seen it yet, on Wolf Street.
So, the idea is that we're just receiving this grant easement for the, where we've already placed?
Correct, yeah, kind of after the fact, and th- this is the first I've heard about it. I've been working with Lakestone on this property for close to four years now, and I think it was just something that came up probably in the title search, um, or a final survey of the QuickTrip property, but, um, I know QuickTrip's already starting to do some moving, those, those houses are down, there's a lot going on over there, but, yeah, that's just kinda tying up the, the paperwork side of things for their, their closing.
Uh, so, uh, you, you'd mentioned that, uh, there may be some more review by, uh, Lauren or Jeff, is that, did you want that added into the motion, or?
I think just the-
Right now, it just says village attorney.
Right, I think once his questions are answered, ultimately, it'll be up to Matt and Derek to make sure they're comfortable. The, we'll send a redline version back to
Okay.
QuickTrip, make sure that they're fine with it, and then they'll send a final version to be, um, signed probably by the clerk or Phil.
Okay, thank you. So, we need a motion. Amanda? Carleen the second. Further discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item nine C, future agenda items. This item gives the board members the opportunity to place items, new, uh, items and new business and a future item for discussion. Anyway, Amanda?
Uh, yeah, so, um, I am on the board of, uh, well, not board, but I'm part of the Oregon Cares group, and, um, they, uh, would like to have, uh, something put on a future agenda item to put Narcan in all of the AED boxes around, uh, village, on village-owned properties, um, in the village. They're, they have grant money that would cover the costs, so if we could put that on a future agenda for discussion and approval to be official.
Any disagreement there?
Okay, Carleen.
I'd also like, uh, there's, we have, uh-
Let me back up. Are you adding, or?
No.
Are you commenting on this one? Okay, we just needed, but, oh, so it sounds like unanimous consent, we'll add that. Okay, sorry, go ahead, Carleen.
I'm sorry, I'm, gotta head.
It's all right.
Um, we also have a prospective member for the DEI committee that I'd like to add approval of that person to the next agenda, please.
Okay, uh, no objection? Okay, by, unanimous consent, so approved. All right, anyone else? Okay, item 10, reported village officers, finance director report, summary of building permits, connection fees, and impact fees ending May 2023. There's a report in the packet. Questions for Lisa? Hearing none. Item B, recreation and programming coordinator report, 2020, 2023, sounds of summer update. Yeah.
All right, yeah, so, once the Summer Fest hoopla dies down, it will be time for the Sounds of Summer concert series. I'd like to thank Ann and Rachel for creating such a great blueprint for the event, and I'm really excited to get my hands on it. We have a lot of fun stuff in store for the entire family, for grownups, whole families, kids, you name it. Lots of returning favorites and a couple new bands as well. And I look forward to seeing everybody there. We, bands are booked, all the big stuff is booked, but we are still in search of sponsors. And I would just like to point out, our sponsorships start at $50 and go all the way up to $1,500. So if you're just a music lover in the community or a big company and you would like to donate to keep the event free, we would greatly appreciate it and we think you should be honored for that donation. If you have any questions, feel free to let me know. And once the Summer Fest hoopla dies down, there should be more on social media, so. Yeah.
Questions, comments? Thanks for a very nice report in the packet.
Thank you.
I wish we had time to go through it page by page.
You and me both, I know, right?
Okay. Item 10C, director of public works report, July 4th ceremony at J.C. Park. You're looking at me like I should probably do this.
I, I think that would be fine, I don't have much to add.
Well, it's kind of, I'll have to go from memory here, but we're going to dedicate the flag, whatever you would display at J.C. Park on July 4th. That's, unless any of this is changed, at 1:00 PM, there will be course members from the VFW there, and, and we're welcome, members of the community. And for the first kids that attend, first children, 100 kids will get an American flag. So we encourage all village residents, village board members, anyone present to be there. Hopefully I have the details right, I'm working from memory. Give that, we'll let you know.
It's in the, it's in, Jeff has a memo in there as well.
Yep, there's a memo.
Yep.
So you summarized it very well.
Oh, thanks. 10D, village department head staff or consultant comments? Seen none. Village board comments? Carleen?
So, at the last DEI committee meeting, we approved the summary, not the summary, the survey that will go out to village staff, board members, committee members, and et cetera. So look for that to come from Candy in the next week. Those will be due back, we said, July 28th, right, Candy? The last Friday in July, so it's completely anonymous. This is to help Nehemiah to craft the, the next stages in the diversity, equity, and inclusion training so that they are addressing the needs of our community and our staff and our, our people who serve in, on committees and boards. So look for that coming from Candy. It is totally anonymous and we'd really appreciate you participating.
Other comments from the village board? Amanda?
Just want to say happy Pride Month. I have these cute little Progress Pride stickers. You're welcome to come up and take as many as you like, I have a big roll, so stick them around and wear it proudly.
Any, anyone else for village board comments? Item 11, announcements in miscellaneous business, which there was a nicely-prepared chart in your packet. Any questions or additions, comments?
No, I think that has the correct July dates, so.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay.
So alter your schedules.
Item 12.
I move.
Jason, Amanda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carries. Thank you to everyone for their time and expertise.
Thank you, Phil.
Just thank you. Oh, thank you.